Today's hearing will focus on the implementation of several election reforms that were passed by the legislature and signed by Governor Wolf last year. A hearing was requested by Senator Kristin Phillips Hill in order to fully bring our elections into the 21st century. Last year, Act 77 received strong bipartisan support. Some of the new reforms included a 50-day mail-in voting period, no-excuse mail-in voting, legislation that would allow the state to borrow $90 million to help our counties purchase new voting systems. The media, in many cases, had categorized Act 77 as one of the most significant election reforms in Pennsylvania since the 1930s. We also passed Act 94 last year, which included further reforms to help ensure privacy at the ballot box, to help remediate problems with jammed scanners, a problem which received wide attention in York County during last year's general election. And so, we all know 2020 is going to be a major election year here in Pennsylvania with a high turnout, and we want to make sure that the reforms that were passed last year are being effectively implemented. With that, I turn it over to Senator Kristin Phillips Hill.
Thank you, Chairman Argle, for holding this important hearing on the recently passed election modernization law, the most significant changes to our election code in decades, as you noted, and its implementation for the upcoming 2020 presidential election. So often, we, as legislators, pass very well-intentioned legislation, and then we watch the implementation fall through the cracks. There is no more important civic duty than participating in our elections process and voting, and that's why today's hearing is so critical. Just two months ago, my home county of York had major, as some said, hiccups with the elections; others said major, major problems, all across the board, and this was before these reforms were implemented. I witnessed and received feedback of long lines at polling places, jammed ballot scanners, lack of privacy, and completed ballots that were abandoned or stuffed into bags. The public's trust was broken. The integrity of our election was questioned. We worked quickly at the end of last year, and thanks to two individuals who are here today, Mr. Marks and Mr. Heinley, we were able to make some further reforms through Act 94 of 2019. Act 94 removed all references to ballot stubs from the election code, as these stubs caused jammed scanners, as well as we ensured that constitutional right to privacy when voting is honored. Today's hearing is important to rebuild that trust with the voters of York County and other counties who experienced issues this past election day. With about half of the state coming on board this year with new voting machines and significant reforms to our state's election code, there are a lot of moving parts. So we have officials from the state, the county, and the local levels here today because this is going to require a team effort at all levels. We need to work together and communicate effectively to ensure we avoid any issues in the upcoming presidential election. And with that, I would like to thank Chairman Argle again for holding this public hearing, and I look forward to our discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Scavelo, thank you for joining us, Marielle. All right, we begin with Jonathan Marks, the Deputy Secretary for Elections and Commissions at the Department of State.
Good morning. I want to thank Chairman Argle, Senator Phillips Hill, and other members of the committee for giving us the opportunity to discuss and answer questions regarding the implementation of Act 77 and Act 94 of 2019, as well as 2020 election preparedness. I did not prepare written testimony for the committee, but with your indulgence, I do want to make some brief remarks before I take questions from the members. The moment the legislature passed and Governor Wolf signed this bipartisan legislation into law on October 31 of last year represented, as Senator Phillips Hill said, the most significant election reform in our lifetimes. It also represented the start of a sprint towards successful implementation of a variety of election reforms prior to the April 2020 primaries. Arguably, the most substantial of these reforms include the addition of mail-in voting as an option for voters, extending the deadline to return ballots, streamlining the process for becoming a permanent absentee or a permanent mail-in voter, removing the straight-party voting requirement, cutting the voter registration deadline in half, and removing the requirement that counties provide official ballots in excess of 100% of their registered voters. I recall vividly a discussion Secretary Bookfar and I had with Executive Director of CCAP, Lisa Schaefer, and then Executive Director Emeritus Doug Hill just moments after Act 77 was signed. Acknowledging the amount of work that would be necessary to successfully implement the election reforms and respecting the fact that our partnership with CCAP and county election directors would never be more critical than during the months leading up to the April 2020 primary, Lisa and Doug suggested, and we wholeheartedly agreed to, the creation of a work group that would allow the department and our county partners to collaborate on necessary technical changes and accompany in guidance required to successfully implement the election reforms. The work group is comprised of CCAP representatives and county election personnel from 11 counties: Allegheny, Berks, Butler, Columbia, Elk, Indiana, Lancaster, Lehigh, Lycoming, Philadelphia, and Snyder, as well as key staff from the Department of State. Since last November's election, the work group has convened five meetings/webinars and numerous ad hoc communications via email and phone as necessary. Since late 2019, we have been working nonstop to prepare for the 2020 primary election on April 28 and the general election on November 3, as well as the five special elections that we had from January through March, and implementation of all the other Act 77 and other voting changes taking effect this year. To make sure counties were prepared for the special election in January and did not experience the issues faced in November, I myself and my team spent hours on the phone with numerous personnel and vendors from York County in particular, as well as staying in touch with Lebanon and Dauphin Counties. We worked with York to ensure that they could take action to prevent the issues they experienced in November. And I will say, I thoroughly enjoyed the conversations we had with election officials there. Members of their office of counsel were involved as well, and I think the steps they took greatly improved their position from the November election. But these items included protecting voter privacy, ensuring correct ballot size, allocating adequate equipment, increasing poll worker training, utilizing proper markers, among other issues. We are continuing this type of outreach to all the counties and to the vendors that support them to prepare for the other four special elections, as well as the upcoming primary and general elections. With regard to Act 77 implementation, our team has been working incredibly hard to implement all the changes, including technology, forms, guidance, county, and public education, and more. These actions include biweekly meetings with the Act 77 work group, two releases to make sure -- to make updates to the shore system, online voter registration, the online absentee ballot request form, changes to the department's website to provide educational material regarding Act 77, teleconferences with the vendors who support county election officials, a webinar for all 67 counties, and an in-person meeting with the Eastern County Election Personnel Association in December. We will be meeting with the Western County election personnel actually at the end of this week. An additional shore releases planned for February, which will include, among other things, necessary poll book changes to implement Act 77, enhanced reporting options for counties, and online options for voters to track their ballots. We also convened a meeting earlier this month with representatives of the political parties who nominated candidates for statewide office at the last general election to discuss the changes we are making and to answer their questions. At the same time, a team of department staff has been working on an education and outreach initiative we are calling Ready to Vote 2020. Its purpose is to provide all of us, county officials, the department, legislators, and other elected officials, political parties, candidates, and other organizations interested in elections, with tools they can use to prepare for and educate voters about recent changes to election laws. These tools will be featured on our voter website, votespa.com, and through our social media presence, and will include 67 individual county webpages, landing pages, with information specific to use of their new voting systems and other information as well. We will also avail ourselves of any opportunity to distribute this information at large public events. For example, the department set up an information booth at the farm show here in Harrisburg the other week to provide information to citizens from all over the Commonwealth who attended this unique celebration of Pennsylvania's farmers and agricultural communities. I know you probably want to ask questions, so I'll stop there. I look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Senator?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Marks, I'd like to thank you, the secretary and other staff at the Department of State for taking the time to meet with me and with York County officials on issues related to the problems that York County had during the 2019 election. It was very much appreciated, and I think it was also very helpful to me personally, as well to York County. Later this morning, Dennis Heinley, who is our judge of elections in York Township, polling place 5-1, will be testifying about some of the issues that his precinct experienced. You've detailed a lot of things in your testimony. What advice specifically are you giving to people like Mr. Heinley, judges of elections, people who are working in the polls, and others to avoid the issues that we saw in York County in 2019?
Well, the advice we're giving to all election officials, whether it's at the county level or local election officials, and as you know, county election officials are responsible for training poll workers, so a lot of the information we drive down to that level goes through the counties. But my advice is really to -- for everyone to be vigilant. You know, the issues that occurred in York County, you know, many of them were avoidable, you know, with additional poll worker training. And I know, you know, when you do a transition like this, and I've actually been -- I'm dating myself a little bit, but I was around the first time in a different capacity at the department when the Help America Vote Act was rolled out, and we rolled out equipment in 2006 to all 67 county boards of elections. There were far more issues then than there were with this most recent rollout. Some of that was because we learned a lot of valuable lessons back then. But when you move to new voting equipment and you have changes, it does sometimes take time for local election officials, and voters for that matter, to get used to them. I think in York County, probably the biggest issue was the printing of the ballots. That seemed to contribute to the long lines, which then created -- had a ripple effect and created a number of other issues that resulted in the kind of overall poor experience that many voters had. So, you know, my advice for county and local election officials is to ensure that you do the proper training, ensure that you're doing adequate, robust logic and accuracy testing prior to the election. The ballot printing error is something that could have been caught during logic and accuracy testing prior to the election. So we worked very closely with not only York County officials, but also directly with the vendors. You know, one of our jobs at the Department of State is to hold vendors accountable and to hold their feet to the fire to ensure that they provide counties with the proper training that they need and that they address issues that occur before and during and even after Election Day. So I guess that would be my very roundabout way of saying it's really just paying attention to all the little details that go into preparing for an election.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have another question, but -- okay, thank you. So last December, the Auditor General released an audit on the shore system, and for those folks who are listening who don't know what that is, it's the statewide uniform registry of electors. And the secretary and I had a brief conversation regarding it. Could you briefly comment on the report's finding that noncooperation resulted in an inability to determine with any degree of reasonable assurance that the shore system is secure and that Pennsylvania voter registration records are complete, accurate, and in compliance with applicable laws, regulations, and related guidelines?
Well, as evidenced in our response to the Auditor General's report, we obviously disagree with some of the assertions. You know, with the data analysis in particular, we found a number of errors in the data analysis, and we were able to outline those in some detail. In terms of the lack of cooperation, that issue is primarily about sharing documentation that related to our election infrastructure, which, as you know, has been identified as critical infrastructure. And these included reports that had a great deal of detail about the department's, you know, the network that supports the shore system, the shore system itself, details that we would not want to get out into the public sphere. So as we were working with the Auditor General's office, we provided evidence that those reviews were done and that they were conducted, but we could not provide a lot of the details of those reports. We did provide redacted copies for their review, but we were not able to provide a lot of the information that was being requested simply because of the sensitive nature of it.
Thank you. But that really begs the question, and that is, that assurance that voters in Pennsylvania would like to have that it's safe, it's secure, that all of our registration records are in compliance with all the applicable laws, regulations, and guidelines?
I can assure you that the system is secure. We work with a variety of partners, starting with the Office of Administration IT that provide kind of the general and overall support for the shore system. But we also have partnerships with the Pennsylvania State Police, the Department of Homeland Security, the Federal Bureau of Investigation. All of our partners support our efforts to ensure that the network, that the system itself, is secure. In terms of the accuracy of the records, we also do a lot of monitoring. We monitor the work that counties are doing to ensure that their records are accurate. We are a member of the ERIC program, the Electronic Registration Information Center, which is a continually growing group of states that provide each other with voter registration data that can then be checked against other sources of information, such as the Social Security Administration's records. And that is now, we're at about 30 states are members, so more than half of the country has membership in there. So we use those resources as well to check our records and do list maintenance under the National Voter Registration Act, as well as our state law, to ensure that our records are clean. You know, that's, of course, one of the most basic steps you can take to ensure that you're preventing fraud and that you're preventing other, you know, attempted interference in our elections.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Scavelo.
Good morning, Deputy Secretary. Thank you. For someone that didn't have prepared remarks, you did very well. I just want you to know that. Northampton County, did you get any calls from people in Northampton County with some issues, miscounting, whatever? Any calls at all, any complaints?
In November?
Yeah.
Yes, we did receive some calls in November. We actually were made aware of the issues in Northampton County prior to receiving phone calls from voters. Those were pretty widely publicized as well relating to their rollout of the new voting equipment. So we were on the phone with Northampton County officials on Election Day and also after Election Day, and we've worked with county election officials and the voting system vendor again. I said earlier that one of our, you know, one of the things that we do, one of our jobs is to hold vendors accountable for providing the support necessary, and we'll continue to do that to make sure that when there are errors, that we, number one, know exactly what happened, we get a root cause analysis from the vendor, and then also take steps, whatever measures are necessary to ensure it doesn't happen again.
You know, what I saw in Monroe, and I visited a few Northampton places, but let's say that table that you're sitting right now, there'd be four chairs, and then there's boxes. And while you're sitting and somebody's passing you to go to the next box, they literally can look at your ballot as you're voting. In the old days, you went into a curtain, and no one saw who you were voting for. And in some of these polling places, especially coming up in the presidential, it's got to be tight, you know, and people literally can be looking at your ballot as you're voting. There's no privacy. Because you've got these cob, you know, these, you know, you don't --
Right. We're using the lessons learned and working with counties to provide additional guidance on secrecy, particularly as it relates to the changes made in Act 94. But a lot of that is polling place layout, which is tricky, and that's why, you know, that's why having this work group and talking to counties frequently about their own experiences is important, because we don't want to draft guidance in a vacuum without input from counties. You know, we end up coming up with some one-size-fits-all. You know, every polling place, there are thousands of them in the Commonwealth, is unique. So we don't want to say this is the only way to do it. But there are ways, even in the layout of the polling place, to ensure privacy, you know, whether it's putting voting booths, you know, back-to-back or making sure there's enough distance between them. Sometimes it's just the way you work the line from people, you know, going from checking in to their voting booth to avoid, you know, that kind of cluster of people around the voting area. So there are things that counties can do and that local election officials can do to mitigate those issues. But I agree with you. It's going to be, you know, obviously, there are going to be a lot of voters showing up in the 2020 primary and certainly in the 2020 November election, and making sure that we're working closely with counties to get the best practices out there that they can use and slightly modify for each of their individual polling places is important.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Senator Loughlin, Erie County.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Marks, thanks for testifying today. Appreciate it. If I heard you correctly, and if I'm wrong, just correct me. Some of the early and absentee mail-in ballots, you want to be able to count them beforehand? Is that correct?
Well, they can't be counted any earlier than the close of polls on Election Day.
Yeah.
Act 77 is very explicit about that.
But that's one of the things that you wanted to change, wasn't it?
Well, I think, you know, as we look at implementation of Act 77, I don't know that we necessarily want to count ballots before the close of polls. That's obviously fraught with, you know, a lot of other considerations. But giving counties maybe the ability, and I don't want to speak for the county election officials who are here, I'm sure they have their own opinions, but I think one thing that could help ensure that those ballots get counted timely is allowing counties to do the canvas process maybe prior to 8:00 p.m., meaning that they could go through them, provide lists to the political parties and to the candidates, check to make sure that the person is qualified to vote, do even maybe the challenge process prior to Election Day, so that they could go through all of that, and they'll have a group of ballots that everyone agrees are qualifying ballots and can be counted, so that when 8:00 on Election Day does arrive, they can tabulate those ballots. As it stands right now, counties can't even begin to do the canvas until 8:00 p.m. There are some things maybe they can do in terms of organization and categorization of the ballots prior to 8:00 p.m., but not being able to canvass is somewhat of a limitation in terms of timely tabulation of ballots.
Okay. Well, I think we may need to have a little more in-depth discussion about how you get an absentee ballot in the first place, then, if you can't rely on it to be accurate when you do receive it. But just almost as an anecdotal comment here, from what I've seen locally in my district, I think waiting to count the ballots or the absentee ballots and the mail-in ballots actually lends a little bit of legitimacy to the process that the folks that are voting in that manner aren't just taken for granted, because sometimes it feels like they are. And I think it's important, it sends a message to the voters that every vote actually counts when they don't gloss over the mail-in votes. And, you know, I think everybody in this room is hoping for an accurate election, regardless of who you hope wins. So just, you know, just a few thoughts that I had while I was sitting here, and I can see, I can at least see the merit in doing the canvassing, so you know that, you know, that these votes deserve to be counted. But I think we might have to, at least on my end, I might have to look into this a little further to better get a handle on that. So thank you.
Sure, and we, you know, we're certainly willing to answer any additional questions that you may have after the fact, but I appreciate and thank you for your comments.
Senator Scavelo.
I want to do a follow-up on the absentee ballots. You know, in the old days, maybe you get a dozen per precinct, you're going to get a hell of a lot more ballots. And so if somebody has their name on that ballot and they appear, they come in to vote, and suppose you miss it because you might have a couple of hundred, and you vote, can she vote? Like, or do we catch that? Or how is he will be to catch it?
Yes, actually, the legislation provided a solution for that problem, and it's a provisional ballot. So if a voter, if a voter has requested an absentee or a mail-in ballot, and the records show that they've already cast that ballot, the voter is not allowed, is not able to vote in person on Election Day. The only method they have is a provisional ballot. If a voter has requested a ballot, but the records don't indicate, there's a little bit of a timing issue here, because voters can, you know, request the ballot up until the Tuesday before the election. If they don't do it in person, it's possible that the poll book will not have an indication that they already voted the ballot. So what we've directed counties to do, and I think it makes sense under the circumstances, is if that indication is on the poll book, that those voters should also be provided with a provisional ballot, as, the same as the ones whose records indicate that a ballot's already been cast. That way, you can do the reconciliation to ensure that somebody has not only voted in person, or has, to ensure somebody can't vote in person and then also have their absentee or mail-in ballot counted as well.
So it's in the book, and if it's not in the book, if it's not noted in the book, and you will have a provisional ballot given to them, and that'll get checked off later on?
Correct, and that will enable the county to reconcile that after Election Day to ensure that the voter only casts one ballot.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Secretary, in my, I know, at this a long time, my very first election, I think we were unsure of the results until 4:00 in the morning, because it took time to count every single piece of paper. Then, of course, the technology changed, and we pretty much knew in my later elections by 10, 11 o'clock at night. Am I hearing from you now that with the counting of the absentee ballots, we're likely to be waiting longer for results than we have been in the last few years?
Yeah, I mean, there will be some consequences to some of these changes, and it is certainly possible that there will be some races, whether it affects a statewide race or not, it depends on how narrow it is, but certainly there may be some legislative and some local races where you're not going to know on Election Night exactly who won. I will tell you, based on my experience, you know, when you're counting ballots, and it happens now, you have military and overseas that can come in up to seven days after the election, you have provisional ballots that are being counted after Election Day. So it's not, it's not that this concept doesn't already exist, but obviously, the expectation is the volume of those ballots will be greater. But what I've seen over the course of my career, that typically, whatever the trend is, on Election Night carries through to those post-election ballots. But having an official, you know, result on Election Night is probably not going to happen in many cases. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to take a week or two weeks, or it's going to drag on forever. You know, obviously, if you have a race, and we've had a couple of them down in Chester County, that were literally decided by a couple of dozen votes, it's probably not going to matter a whole lot, you know, what laws are in place. When you have a race that close, you're likely headed for a recount and other post-election things. But I think, you know, I think there is certainly a possibility that, you know, that most folks will know who won the election on Election Night, but it's also, there's an increased possibility that some of those may drag on to the day afterwards or a couple of days after.
In terms of the big picture, how have county election officials across the state been reacting? In, in terms of the, the big picture, how have county election officials across the state been reacting to the, the implementation of these major new changes?
I, you know, it was when, when the law was passed, and again, this is, this is the most election reform we've had in 80 years. So, you know, I think the initial reaction from counties, and even from some folks at the Department of State, was, was wow, this is a lot of work that we have to do. But I'm absolutely confident, and the counties have shown me that they're confident as well. You know, I mentioned the webinars that we have with the work group, the, the frequent communications we have with counties, ad hoc communications in between those official meetings. They're lively sometimes, you know, counties are worried about little details, and, and that's why it's very important that we're working closely with them to ensure whatever we do, whether it's changes to the shore system, or, or changes to our guidance, meet the needs and, and provide, to the extent possible, the extent allowed under law, administrative ease for the counties. So I, I think the counties, and you have three of them here, and they'll be able to speak for themselves. I think the counties have been very committed to making sure that these changes are implemented successfully. Our staff is committed to making sure they're implemented successfully. Will there be frayed nerves along the way as we build all of this stuff and implement it? Absolutely. But I think in the end, everyone I've spoken to is confident that we're going to make it work. You know, that's, I, I know most of the election officials throughout the Commonwealth very well. We do have some new ones, and those are the ones we're going to pay, you know, special attention to in terms of guidance. But I know them well, and I know that they're capable of making this successful. Our staff's capable of making it successful, so I think we'll be successful in the end.
So your prediction is no major issues in this primary or general as a result of all these changes?
I don't have a crystal ball, but yes, my prediction is, is no major issues. I, I believe very firmly in the capabilities of our staff and the capabilities of county staff across the Commonwealth. I know that we're going, going to be able to do this successfully. You know, may have some more gray hairs, a little bit jittery at the end of it, but I think we'll be successful in the long run.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We turn now to a panel, Tim Benio, the chief clerk from Lehigh County, Joe Cantz, the chairman of the Board of Commissioners in Snyder County, and the co-chair of CCAP's Election Reform Committee, and Forrest Lehman, the director of elections at Lycoming County. And gentlemen, if I've mangled any of your names, you can just call me Argyle, all right, because everybody else does. All right, please begin.
Thank you, Senator Argyle, Senator Phillips Hill, and members of the committee for inviting us here today. These meetings are extremely important for the legislation to better understand the election world at our level. How the implementation of Act 77 and 94, and its numerous changes, can be best be described as in one word, uncertainty. Election directors are very curious people by nature, and we, we thrive on detail and make decisions on past statistics, decisions made on data that we know and trust. The changes with these acts have made our world anything but certain. You'll have fun, you'll have trouble finding any director who argues that the 1937 election code didn't need to be upgraded. We have been asking the legislation to change the code for years and are grateful for the modernization. The Butterfly Effect, which was a bad movie, but the theory of the Butterfly Effect was that if something small changes here, something large can change down the road. And that's kind of where we are right now. We're not sure what the changes are going to be and how, what's the, what the landscape's going to look like with these changes. We don't know how many ballots we're going to need to send out. We don't know how many ballots are going to be returned. We don't know how many people are going to show up at the polls. This is the uncertainty that we, we are dealing with. My hope is, is this meeting will bridge some of the gaps between the expectations of how the 2020 elections will run and how the 2020 elections will actually be run. My written testimony provides some ideas for other reforms that will definitely help in cost savings and efficiency. So I know there's going to be a lot of questions, so the commissioner and director have more details in their testimony for specifics.
Good morning. There we go. Good morning, Senator Argyle and Senator Phillips Hill. Thank you for the invitation, senators as well. Senator Martin, I know, is very familiar with elections and how they're run at the county level. It's good to be here. As a commissioner who has been serving my constituents for rural county for the past 12 years, I also want to thank the Senate for working to make some long overdue changes, as Tim mentioned, on the election code last year. As most compromise bills normally do, Act 77 and even Act 94 have brought a number of new challenges to us. And as we head into the primary this April, counties will be dealing with a new, shorter 15-day deadline for voter registrations, new mail-in ballot processes, which we've heard about today, and new timeframes for absentee and mail-in ballots. Not to mention that there will be, and I haven't heard this yet today, 22 counties that will be implementing their new elections equipment in this coming primary. So that'll be quite a challenge for them as well. In addition, the new requirements for absentee ballots to be tabulated after 8:00 p.m. on Election Day and on a central count machine will cause disruptions if the county doesn't have a central tabulator. In my county, we thought that our 300,000, nearly $300,000 investment, which was mandated to us, of course, with the new laws for new equipment, was bad enough. But especially when we already had a paper ballot, I won't get into that. But now, as of this past week, we found out that we're going to need to spend nearly another $60,000 to buy a central tabulator. Now, we wouldn't have to do that, we could try and do, use the, the smaller machines. However, I've heard a lot of concern here today about the timeframes of getting those results out. And that's the reason I do not want to be on CNN or Fox News on Election Night, or the next day, or the next day, still waiting to get the results of the election that happened three days prior to that. So we are making that investment in a central tabulator, but that's something that we did not budget for, which is a grave concern for a small rural seventh-class county, where even after the 60% match from the, the state's help, it's still a $25,000 to $30,000 investment that we're going to have to make, which we did not, we're not able to budget for. Further, we'll need to educate the public and our media about the timeframes to tabulate the ballots, especially in a presidential year, as I said, when national media is watching very closely. None of us know how many mail-in ballots we're going to be receiving, as Tim mentioned, or how these ballots will affect the timeframes to count the ballots. In counties that do not have a method for central tabulation, this is a big concern for me, results could take up to three days past the election. One thing that could help save time and money would be to pursue the necessary changes in the Constitution regarding mail-in ballots. I know Director Lehman is going to talk to that a little bit. A single application for mail-in ballot and absentees would be a big step in getting in the right direction on that issue as well. Again, we look forward to questions, and we thank you for the opportunity to be part of this discussion.
Good morning, Chairman Argyle, Senator Phillips Hill, other members of the committee. Thank you for providing county election officials with an opportunity to speak with you about the current state of elections. We very much want to work with the legislature, as we have done in the past, to ensure that our elections are as accurate, reliable, and secure as possible. And Act 77 of 2019 was an important step forward for voters. It contained some badly needed election reforms, and we have been working with Department of State to implement that. They've been doing a commendable job. I thank them for their ongoing efforts and support on behalf of counties. But there are several critical fixes that need to be made to Act 77 to ease some new problems that it has created for counties and for their voters. First and foremost, the legislature must combine the absentee and mail-in balloting processes into a single, no-excuse balloting process, no matter what it takes. Call it absentee, call it mail-in voting, whatever you like. If the state constitution needs to be amended, the legislature needs to start the process now. Every election in which counties have to administer separate absentee and mail-in ballot processes will be more expensive and complicated than it needs to be. And those elections will be prone to voter confusion, to poll worker confusion, ballot custody problems, and potential double voting and legal challenges. Every voter's right to have their absentee ballot or mail-in ballot counted is currently at risk if they do not apply for the correct ballot for which they are eligible. And these parallel processes established by Act 77 are to blame. And to delay on this task is hurting counties and hurting their voters, so it needs to be fixed. And until those processes can be combined by constitutional amendment, if that is the path it needs to take, the legislature must eliminate various requirements in Act 77 that impose an unreasonable administrative burden on counties. One would be eliminate the requirement that special instructions for absentee and mail-in voters have to appear on the ballot. Let counties include those instructions as separate, prominently marked materials inside the envelope for the voter. It'll save us the work of designing, programming, and testing multiple ballot types that contain different instructions. And that design and programming process is the process that can lead to the kinds of problems we saw on Election Day. So the less complicated we can make that for counties, the better. Second, eliminate the requirement that absentee ballots and mail-in ballots have to be identified in red. Let counties label their ballots in black, which makes it possible for us to issue ballots by changing just the top line of the ballot in our design software, instead of manually interacting with every ballot to have to stamp in, in red, or go down the path of color printing, which is a huge expense. Third, eliminate the requirement that the plain white secrecy envelopes for absentee and mail-in ballots be labeled differently. Let counties use a single secrecy envelope for both types and have it just say ballot secrecy envelope, instead of absentee ballot or mail-in ballot. Because now I have to order two types of envelopes, maintain two separate supply streams, that's a lot of extra work. Additionally, I believe the legislature needs to eliminate the requirement in Act 77 that counties need to immediately respond to in-person requests for absentee or mail-in ballots. County voter registration offices do not have the staff and the resources to serve as early in-person vote centers. And that's what Act 77 is going to turn us into. We cannot be asked to drop everything that we are doing in the final weeks before an election over and over again, every time one or two voters walk into the office to request a ballot and want to vote early. It will happen constantly in the weeks before the primary and the November election. Nothing will get done, and, and that is very detrimental if we're in the middle of something like logic and accuracy testing. A reasonable process would be for counties to be required to make all of those in-person ballot requests available for pickup the next business day, much like we're required to process an absentee ballot in 48 hours now, so that we can process those requests in larger batches. And based on a couple of the questions about canvassing of absentee ballots, I can offer a couple additional thoughts about that. The current process for canvassing absentee ballots and, and mail-in ballots, it requires voters' names to be announced and for the ballots to be opened one at a time in order to facilitate real-time challenges. And that worked in the past, because it was undertaken at the precinct level by poll workers after the close of polls. It was a decentralized process. And all of those canvassed ballots could be tabulated immediately when they came back to the county on Election Night. But going forward with, with Act 77, all of those ballots are now being retained by the county centrally. They're not going out to the polls. And so the county is now going to be responsible for that open, transparent process of reading names, opening the ballots, facilitating challenges. And so that's why many counties are concerned that we are not going to have the time, the space, or the staff to undertake a full and fair canvassing process on Election Night, if anybody is there to make challenges. And so that is why, under the current rules, it is likely that there will be a large universe of uncounted absentee ballots and mail-in ballots on Election Night. So we won't be able to, to gloss over those ballots. They're going to be a, a major part of the Election Night results that we're not going to know and could prevent the state from being called on Election Night, depending on the contest. That's why I think the way forward is, is going to be something along the lines of what Deputy Secretary Marks suggested. I, I agree with him entirely. We need to reform that canvassing process. The, the public already has access to public lists of these voters. And so all the legislature might need to do is require that all challenges against those ballots be filed before the close of polls. Let the county separate out any ballots that are subject to challenge, and then we can canvass the rest quickly and efficiently on, on Election Night or soon afterward. And then we can do a full and fair hearing on challenged ballots after the fact. And the last thing I want to comment on before I, before we invite questions is just that there were several county election directors who wanted to attend this hearing. They wanted to be here, they wanted a chance to speak, but they could not do so, because they are preparing for special elections on March 17th. These special elections are occurring less than six weeks before the regularly scheduled primary on April 28th. They are expensive, and they are disruptive. And I asked the counties involved before I came here how much taxpayer money they expect to spend to administer their special elections on March 17th. And a ballpark total we came up with was about $500,000. And even that figure does not do justice to the logistical problems that special elections create for counties, their polling facilities, and their poll workers. Counties are already struggling to deploy new voting equipment, to comply with Act 77 in time for the April 28th primary. And my colleagues and I are here today asking you for help for a lifeline with our work. And so when the, when the officials who are tasked with scheduling special elections set one up for March 17th, less than six weeks before a primary, that's not a lifeline. The counties who are involved, they got thrown an anchor. And now, I reviewed the State House's legislative calendar this morning. There are 10 days on which the House is actually in session, between March 17th and April 28th. So that's $500,000 divided by three legislators, divided by 10 days in session. It works out to about $17,000 per day, per legislator, that will have been spent to elect and seat those three legislators on March 17th, instead of April 28th. And, I mean, not just as an election director, but as a state taxpayer, I don't see the utility in spending half a million dollars to seat a handful of legislators for a handful of days when it could have been handled on April 28th. And so this scheduling of special elections, it, it needs to change badly. They need to be held concurrently with regular primaries and elections. So thank you for your time, I, I welcome your questions.
Gentlemen, thank you very, very much. Mr. Lehman, I'm going to follow up on your testimony. You, you are correct. Many of your colleagues that, we had hoped, who would be here with us today to talk about these election issues are back home in their counties, preparing for those special elections. And I really appreciate your testimony on the issues that county elections directors face when addressing special elections. Can you elaborate on your thoughts and your recommendations on how to balance voters' rights to be represented by not waiting to fill those vacant seats with the, the cost of special elections to the taxpayer?
Well, I can understand voters may have an interest in being represented, but I think one fact that often gets lost in the discussion about how long a seat goes vacant or, or what is lost by not having that seat occupied is that while there is a vacancy, those offices remain open. And there are many basic constituent services that are still able to be provided. So the, you know, the question isn't, isn't a, a binary question. It's not that, that the seat is vacant and therefore, you know, those people have no representation or services at all. It becomes what, what have they lost in terms of having a voting member while still retaining constituent services versus what is the additional cost to, to put a new person in a seat? For, just in the example of March 17th, there's a, is a very small number of legislative days where that person would be there, be voting, be, be active. And, and then when you turn that on its head and look back at the locality, at the, at the great confusion and disarray that causes at the county level to find out whether your polling place facilities are available for a special election that got called maybe only 60 days in advance. You know, those, those churches and township buildings and fire halls, they have other things that they do during the year, and they may not have planned for a, a March 17th special election. Similarly, your poll workers may or may not be available on that date that just got called. And so that can be a, a really daunting proposition to try to put together an election in such a short amount of time that is, if history is any guide to the present, is, is likely to be very low turnout as well. And so the, you know, it's hard to see where a lot of the, the winds are in that equation.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much. And that certainly as a, a member from a seat where there- And that certainly as a member from a seat where there has been a special election in a county where we have seen several special elections, you know, there are four members that represent York County, and three of those four seats in the very recent history have experienced special elections in their senate seats. I'm incredibly empathetic to what you are saying. If I could, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Benio, one of your neighboring counties that had a number of issues with their new machines during the general election in 2019, given your proximity and the lack of apparent problems that you had in Lehigh County, we didn't read about you the day after the election. What were the actions that you took that you believe were important elements in ensuring that your election in Lehigh County runs smoothly? What do you believe were and maybe are the factors in determining whether a county had a smooth election or was fraught with problems, regardless of whether or not they had new machines?
Thank you, Senator. Well, Northampton County was in flux. They didn't have a Director of Elections at the time, so they didn't have a chief person in charge of that department, which I believe overseeing the processes that need to be gone through throughout the whole election cycle is, they weren't met because of that lack of supervision, I believe. The acting director did a fantastic job with what she was given to work with. So someone experienced is what they needed to succeed in that election.
So clearly, experience and training is essential in making sure that an election runs appropriately.
I believe so, ma'am, yes.
Yeah. Thank you. And one last question for Commissioner Cantz. Knowing of your help and support of the state government committee's efforts to bring meaningful reforms to our elections code and your continued interest in these discussions, you're the co-chair of CCAP's Elections Reform Committee. What do you think are some of the other areas of possible changes that you would like us to pursue? We've heard a couple of them from your commissioner colleagues, you know, so sort of give us your roadmap of where we need to go in the future, what we should change, and maybe if there are any issues that you would like us to absolutely avoid. It would be really helpful.
Sure. No, thank you for the question. Number one, I think that's top on all of our lists, and we've been discussing this for the past number of years now, is to really have a permanent body for elections that consults with the legislature on a regular basis so that we're part of the discussion constantly that if there's any changes that are being considered, that we can sort of vet them from a boots-on-the-ground type perspective. Because I think a lot of the problems that we've discussed here today, that we did see in the last election, we knew that some of those were possible, obviously with those changes. And that's why we're here today to discuss the possibility of the impending, the next primary and the problems that we foresee that could come about and the concerns that we have. One of those that I think we should look at as well in conjunction with Act 77 is, you know, we have now received, all the elections directors have received from the Department of State guidelines, if you will, as we implement the changes made by Act 77. One of the concerns that I have as a commissioner and as an elector, or as a citizen of the state, is the Department of State is really, I think, pushing early voting by way of a mail-in ballot and early voting vote centers, as Director Lehman mentioned in his testimony. My concern with that, and this has been a concern all along, is we've been discussing this potential in the future of vote centers, which we've seen in other states. I've been against it for a long time. Because if you have a vote center outside of a regular precinct, how is that going to be chosen? Is there going to be a disenfranchisement of voters because it's on the wrong side of town, on the wrong side of the precinct, where the transportation goes to, where it doesn't get to? Someone's going to be disenfranchised if you have that vote center not clearly defined how it should be located. And if you have, let's face it, I mean, I try and be unbiased as a commissioner, but we too are, in some ways, partisan folks by nature of being elected, either as a Republican or a Democrat. So to have that unbiased perspective as to where that location is chosen, that's a concern that I think that the legislature should have. Because it will not only affect you, it will affect our voters, it will affect everyone throughout the Commonwealth if we're not careful how those sites are chosen. So that's another issue that I would like to... And the last thing, this was a thought that I had this morning. One concern that I have also moving forward is, Tim mentioned in his testimony, we don't know how many mail-in ballots and absentee ballots we're going to receive. And it may seem like a miniscule financial issue, but postage, counties now have no way of really knowing, how much postage do we have to budget for? And like I said, you know, it's a few cents here and there, but it's going to add up. And maybe one of the things we consider, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that there's such a thing as official mail, that our legislators are allowed to mail with a reduced or free postage? This is the most official thing I can think of, is the elections. Maybe that's something that we consider moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Senator Martin, Lancaster County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for your testimony. You actually hit on something that kind of was going to lead into my question, Commissioner Cantz. When you talk about these voting centers or drive-up voting that was discussed before, is that I think people forget the checks and balances that are put in place inside a polling place in terms of the true, where I believe the most important security of a ballot really occurs is when you have multiple eyes on it. And that can't be understated, overstated enough how important that is. And so at all these locations, are you going to have a quote-unquote "majority and minority" inspector who are going to escort the county elections worker? You know, if they're walking from the curb, walking back into a building, or whatever other voting center you're set up? There's a reason why we had put that system in place, because of the partisan nature of elections that all eyes, we have poll watcher certificates that go out to these. So my question was going to be, as we look at this centralized system, when their ballots were, absentee ballots were opened at the polling locations prior, they're done so in front of those numerous eyes, correct? What does the law require or what do you see is going to be the best practice? I think we just shifted a huge, everyone focused, the spotlight on these county elections offices in a centralized way, especially with close elections. There's a bigger chunk of the overall vote that's going to be sitting unopened, right? Especially in those close races. What do we do? What is the security aspect of that? And in terms of the opening of each of those ballots, what's guaranteeing that the many eyes to ensure? I mean, you talked about not being on Fox News or CNN. I think as county election workers, how did the public react when, I think it was a couple cycles ago down in Florida, it might have been a U.S. Senate race or a governor's race, the last one they had, when, oh, look, a truck full of boxes of absentee ballots was just found four days later that we forgot to include in the tabulation? Can you talk about the security a little bit?
Well, I think that the question about absentee ballots and mail-in ballots at the county is an extension of the new challenge that all counties have faced as they have implemented paper-based voting systems. And so we're all now familiar with the new set of challenges you have when you have a ballot that is a, it's a physical object that you have to print, you have to store, you send it out to a polling place, it gets voted and comes back, you're retaining it for a length of time after the election. So, you know, in that respect, the new challenges that Act 77 brings in as far as keeping absentee or mail-in ballots secure at a county office after they've been voted, I don't think are going to be a huge issue for counties. I mean, we have places where we can store them securely, just like we've been storing, we stored precinct ballots securely before they went out to the polling place. We have county employees who help us on election night. They're sworn in as Board of Election workers, and they assist us with counting absentee ballots, five, six people. We may need more, sure, going forward. But I have full faith in their ability to do that and to be able to do it security and of course, securely. And of course, we've got 20, 30 people in that office on election night. So there's plenty of visibility and transparency to be able to conduct that process centrally.
And so are there people who are permitted to watch, come in and watch you open them from each of the parties or other interested parties in terms of you opening up all those? That process is in place in every county?
Well, the canvassing process permits for that type of transparency if there was a representative of a party or a candidate who wished to be present to observe. I think that experience might vary from county to county, whether that is something that has typically happened. Now, nobody may have any experience with central canvassing of absentees, you know, at this, of this quantity. But yeah, I think the experiences of individual counties could vary. And what is likely to happen if someone appears and says, hey, I want to observe the process and I want to potentially challenge an absentee ballot? It may require that county to put off its process entirely until the following day because we've got our hands full with precincts coming back, the precinct ballots coming back, getting those results put through. And to run a full and fair canvassing operation that is opening one ballot at a time, providing for observation and challenges, I don't think that would be doable on election night. And if we were to see more challenges, I think something else that might need to be looked at would be the deposit fee, to challenge an absentee ballot. I mean, it's $10. What was $10 worth in 1937? Well, I'll tell you, I checked before I came in here. It was worth about $178. You know, and that gets back to the original intent of the legislature when they enacted that deposit challenge. I'm assuming that was in 1937. Maybe I'm wrong about that. But the intent was that if you're going to file a deposit to challenge somebody's vote, that that represents a substantive expenditure to challenge that ballot. And that $10 obviously is worth a lot less today. You know, that has not kept up with inflation. And so if this is something that counties may see on a larger scale, that deposit maybe needs to be looked at so that it continues to represent a substantive expenditure, that someone should be doing it for what are meritorious reasons and not just as a nuisance or an abusive process.
I just think naturally that there's going to be more absentee ballots. It's going to be more, lead to naturally a more of a focus on the canvassing portion of it, which I believe is also going to lead to more challenges. There's going to be a lot more scrutiny of what's going on in that process. And my final thing is not necessarily a question, but just more a comment. And I can see it actually in the faces of folks who are actually doing this. I remember my days being able to find enough people even to fill the minority and majority inspector spots, the judge of elections, the volunteers who make that whole system run was just very tremendous effort as we were preparing for each of those elections. That it's just so critical to understand that every single little thing that we do up here that puts more on your plate and that you have to do, I think further is going to exasperate. The clear problem is that it's tough finding people to make these elections work and the volunteers to do it. It's not just the people who are employed by the county elections office, but that's a tremendous amount of volunteers or people who run for these elected election positions in each of these precincts. It's extremely hard now, and I think we're just making it much more difficult. So I just wanted to add that.
Senator Martin, if I can just make two quick comments in regards to your first question. You just took one of my comments, and that is, it gets more and more difficult every year to find poll workers, essentially volunteers. I mean, let's face it, they don't make a lot of money. And they are civic-minded folks, but it's getting harder and harder to find those folks to sit there for 13 hours on election day, not to mention if you have the whole discussion of vote centers, which that just exacerbates the problem that much more. And secondly, you know, in regards to the central tabulation of absentee ballots, back to the way it used to be, you know, I believe in local when it comes to local elections. Don't take the local out of the local elections. The more local you can make it, the more I believe that it's going to be a secure process. When you have your peers that you live amongst as poll workers who know you most of the time, or at least know where you live, when they see your, on the poll book, oh, yeah, I know where you live, at 144 Squirrel Street, or whatever, that makes it more local. And to take that away on the absentee portion of that, you know, not to say that it can't work, it's going to be more difficult, I believe, at the central level. But there's something special about having that done at the polling place. So that's one of the many things we're going to have to deal with.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, thanks for testifying today. I know it's, you know, you got to drive down here and it's an inconvenience, but it's important. My question today is for Mr. Lehman. In point number two that you were making about the absentee ballots, you know, I've been fortunate enough, I've never had to use one, so I'm not overly familiar with how the actual process works. Could you walk me through that? Let's just pretend I walked into your office and I need an absentee ballot. What's the process for me to get one?
Well, they would have to fill out a paper application. And under Act 77, to apply for an absentee ballot, to be eligible for one, they would need to be unable to appear at the polls due to a work or medical-related reason, to gloss over some nuance. And if they're not eligible for an absentee ballot, then they would be able to apply for a mail-in ballot. And so the danger you get into because of this bifurcated process, the eligibility question, is that if a voter goes out on their own and they pick one application or the other and it turns out to be incorrect, I guess it's theoretically possible voters' eligibility, their ballot could be challenged on the basis that they used the wrong application process.
Okay. How much time does that actually take out of one of your employee's day?
Oh, I see. You're asking about the people who come in and they want... So it can actually, it can take 10 to 15 minutes per voter. If they filled out a paper application, that needs to be data entered into the voter registration system. It needs to be processed, a label generated, all those materials need to be printed out. The ballot, correct ballot for that voter needs to be printed out. It all needs to be packaged and handed to the voter. And for an individual voter, yeah, it may take 10 minutes. But if you have 30, 40 voters come in during a day, all with the same request, and you have to stop what you're doing, start at step one and go through that, it can very quickly add up to quite a lot of time and productivity taken out of the day. And I can say, just even before Act 77, we have had people do that here and there, and we've been able to accommodate them. But under this new arrangement, if the numbers go up dramatically with mail-in ballots, it's going to become a very great difficulty during very busy periods if we're trying to do logic and accuracy testing and you have people coming in in the middle of involved workflows like that. And I think that's where the need is there for some sort of ability for a county to defer that and be able to do it all at once and have them available the next day.
Well, thank you for explaining that process. Well, second point, I agree with you about these special elections. I think, you know, when a primary or a general is merely a few weeks afterwards, it seems redundant as a taxpayer to have to pick up the tab for that. So it's something that I agree with you on. I will say this, though. In listening to your testimony, I'm not sure if it was coming across as frustration or almost as anger, but, you know, we are all in kind of the customer service business. And if I came into your office and I was told to come back the next business day because I wanted an absentee or a mail-in ballot, I can tell you that I would be furious with you. And I think in government, we all need to be mindful that for the most part, we're here to serve our constituents. So that was just a point that I wanted to make to you. And I would also say this, you know, this is a little bit of a learning process for all... all of us as we roll out these new initiatives. And, you know, if a county needs to hire a temporary worker to deal with mail-in ballots, I don't think that's that much of a stretch for a county to have to do. So just, that's my two cents on that. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm curious, the question that I asked the Deputy Secretary, in terms of prediction for the conduct of the primary and the general election this year, asked if we could be assured of no major issues, and I was told in all likelihood, we should be good, despite the fact that we've made a lot of changes. Do you share that optimism?
I'll take that question first, Senator. My county is in a little bit different situation because we are heading into a primary with a brand-new elections director. I don't know who that person's going to be yet. We are in the process of hiring that person. So I have some serious concerns, although I have the utmost confidence in the person that we are going to hire. I do have serious concerns about all the implementation of this new language that they're going to have to deal with as a first elections, first-time, potentially first-time elections director. So I don't believe in crystal balls, but I'll be doing a lot of praying about it.
Okay. I think we will be okay, but I have a lot of sympathy for the counties who have yet to roll out their new equipment and also have to comply with Act 77 at the same time. That's a lot to do. And although I think things will go mostly smoothly on election day, perhaps with some of the minor hiccups we saw in November, there's potential for that when a third of the state is rolling out new equipment. Although I think overall it will go smoothly, I would caution all stakeholders, the public, the media, that Act 77, it was a trade-off. I mean, it traded away some knowledge of unofficial election night results for voter convenience. And there's not necessarily anything wrong with that. I'm not saying that's a bad thing or a good thing, but we need to understand that there was, there were values that were being balanced out. And the media, the voters need to be fully aware of what has been lost and what has been gained. And, you know, one thing that I think is much more likely now than it was before Act 77 is not knowing the outcome of one or more contests, if not in the primary, than in November, due to a much larger universe, potentially much larger universe of uncounted ballots on election night, absentees and mail-ins.
My testimony stated uncertainty, and that's never some, that's not a place we wish to function in, in uncertainty. I have confidence that we use the data that we've learned. So the people that are implementing the new machines this round will use our mistakes to their benefit. And I think, I don't foresee anything worse than what we saw in November, even with the additional Act 77.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner, second question. You understand the legislature doesn't always play referee well. And so if 60 counties come to us and say this, and seven counties come over and say no, perhaps nothing happens. Is it likely that CCAP is going to be able to come to us with a very strong position representing all, or at least a great majority of the counties, saying, here is a list of unified changes that we want to see enacted to further the progress that we've made in dealing with election day issues?
Great question, Senator. I also have the honor and privilege of serving as CCAP's Chairman of Resolutions Committee, which all of those items that you mentioned passed through. So we do have a platform with various planks that have already been agreed, voted and agreed upon by the majority of our commissioners around the Commonwealth that we support. Many of those items dealing with elections. So I could tell you with a fervent yes, we do have a list of things that we are supportive of and things that we do not support currently in our platform. Some other things that we may not have voted on in the past would have to be discussed and debated, and we may not come to a resolution on them, but we can surely get you a list of all of those items.
Thank you. And one last issue, and this one I probably know more about, just because I've been here for quite a while. You familiar with why we do special elections? I mean, in 1980, my neighbors in Carbon County went two years without a voice in the State House of Representatives. It was terribly unfair. In the 1990s, we saw Presiding Officer of the Senate, the then Lieutenant Governor, choosing to have special elections here, but not over here. And newspapers across the state said, you know, this is incredibly unfair, incredibly undemocratic. The law was changed. I think it would have been Governor Ridge that signed it. Now I'm hearing maybe we're having a little too much democracy, and I understand it's expensive. Is that some, is that issue, has that issue reached the point where CCAP has said, here is our suggestion, or is that one still working its way through the process?
I do not know where, what our position is currently on that. We'd have to check it out in our platform. I can add my two cents, though, because I was listening very intently as Director Lehman was talking about that issue. While I completely understand and sympathize from the elections director's perspective how difficult this is going to be in the next few weeks, on top of all the many processes that have changed with Act 77, I get that part of it, and I completely understand it, and I sympathize with them. However, as a person who is represented in my county by two state representatives who actually went through a special election this past year in 2019, I also know how important it is to me as a commissioner to get to my state representative or my state senator in a very timely fashion on issues that may have very significant impacts on myself as a commissioner and my county residents. So I get that we have to have the perfect balance to make both things worked in conjunction with each other. So I fully understand both sides of that issue, and I don't think it's an easy one that we, to be resolved.
And what we did at that point in the 1990s was we took away, I guess we, the Presiding Officer had complete flexibility, do it or don't do it. We gave them some set of rules. Perhaps, I think what I'm hearing today is we can tweak that a little bit, but we do need to be careful. I mean, I think in the case of the Senate district that I represent, my predecessor died as a result of a terrible accident. And so half of October, November, December, January, February, half of March, there was 250,000 people with no voice in the state senate. Had we made them wait until the primary, it would have been seven months instead of five months. And so, as I said, it's one that, I understand how we got where we are, because I think of abuses in the past. I understand it's expensive. I guess you're completely, I think, the county costs are completely reimbursed by the state. So the cost is really shared by all state taxpayers. But it's one that, if we're going to change it, we do need to be very careful, because I understand how we got to where we are today.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We turn now to Dennis Heinley, the Judge of Elections from York Township 5-1.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
About two or three weeks before, I was alerted to the fact that I was elected. So I was given the list. You probably all understand what that is. And I worked really hard for probably three or four weeks to get my crew together. And they've been doing a fantastic job. We have four elections under our belt now, including the last one, which was pretty challenging. So I'm very proud of what they do. And to that point, all of the poll workers that I have met, in 149 precincts in York County, have been very impressive. They're very knowledgeable and very committed to what they're doing. So just want to take a few minutes now to talk about this last election. We were alerted to the details of the election at judge training on the 26th of October. That occurs 10 days before the actual election. And one of the things that I would really like to see change is that we have more communication between us and the Board of Elections in between elections, and not just when we are about to have the election or, and actually get paid to do it. And that way, we could communicate with our team members in the interim. So as you know, the, this last election, we're two pieces of paper, two ballots. One was regular ballot, and one was the retention ballot for judges. So when we got the true scoop about what was going to be happening, and how many machines we were going to have, how many privacy screens we were going to have, we met on the eve of the election, which we always do for about an hour, and we brainstormed how we were going to handle this the next day. Knowing that voters weren't really up to speed on what they were going to be walking into, we wrote a couple little versions of what each of us would be able to say to a voter as they came into the poll. And it went something like this, you know, I just want to take about 30 seconds to give you an idea about what's changed here. And while I'm saying that, they're looking at everything behind me that either is there new or isn't there, something that's not there anymore. And I said, you know, we are, we have paper ballots, and I had a ballot, a sample in my hand, and I showed them the front and the back of them. And I said, they have little circles on them. I went through the whole drill about how to fill them out. And I said, once you go over to the desk and get your card, you're going to go pretty much the same way you did before, except you'll have a paper ballot. You'll fill that out, and then bring it over to the scanner, which is on this side of the room. And just that, you know, 30 or 40 seconds of orientation made all the difference in the world when it came to how successful they were in being able to vote efficiently. And the proof in the pudding there is that of the 386 voters we had come through that cast 772 pieces of paper into the machines, we had 22 torn barcodes, which probably my poll workers did, trying to tear them off of the stubs, which, by the way, thank you immensely for getting rid of those things. Only seven voter errors where they did the wrong thing. One, three bled through the ink, the ink bled through, and one machine, one jammed in the machine. So it was 33 altogether out of all those votes. So just that little thing. And I guess one of the points I want to emphasize is that by getting feedback from all of us, you can see the benefit of thinking about these voters as customers, just as this Senator mentioned over here. And if you think of them that way, then there are certain things that go into a customer's expectation for all of us. The first thing is we want convenience. Is it easy to do this? Availability. Does the poll have the things that I need to get my vote cast? And there are a variety of things that people come in and ask for. And then functionality. And functionality was obviously the big problem we had in this last election. How does everything work? Is my name in the book? Is it recorded properly? Do, does the machine work? Is it jammed? All the things related to the functionality experience of being able to vote. And if you do those three things really, really well, whether you're selling books in a bookstore, or whether you're, you know, conducting the voting process, you're going to build a relationship with that person that will cause them to not think as much about how much they have to pay for their product. So if voters get a great experience in the voting process, and they have to pay a few hundred dollars in taxes, I think they'll be a little bit more able to accept that. You know, I'm not a politician, so I don't know how that works, but in the long run, but I really think the voting experience is something that people should be wanting to do. So a question to ask is, as far as what is the vision for the voting process? What do we want voters to say when they hear the words Pennsylvania elections? Are they going to, you know, say something really great, or are they going to complain? Is this something they're really going to think a lot of or not? And how do we get them to the point where they actually will say that? So the mission, vision, mission, what are we trying to do? We are obviously there to provide a really great voting experience. And then the values include all the things that I've just been talking about as to how we actually do something. How do we deliver on what the voters need to be able to have a good experience? And for all these things, we would establish goals. Poll workers, the same thing. Poll workers are my customers because they work with me. And so I make sure that their experience is going to be much along the same lines as I'm describing the voter's experience. But to get there, we need to do some things that maybe we don't, we should do more of. And maybe we do some of these things well already. Benchmarking, data collection, and learning opportunities. And the learning opportunities are around the training that the poll workers receive. This last, the last election with a new equipment, it could have been a lot better. And I often wonder now why the company that made the equipment wasn't participating in that, but I guess there was a good reason for that. But, you know, the, so the people from the Election Board Office, you know, did the training. But this is, but voting is a complicated process. It's really two assembly lines operating at the same time. It's the assembly line that the poll workers work on, start to finish, and then it's the assembly line of the voter when you give them the ballot, and they have to go from that point to the finish line. And the equipment, the policies, the checklist, all these things are very complicated and complex. And my suggestion would be to take a blue-sky look at this and say, what can we do to provide training that would be authentic and that would be absolutely effective in teaching people how to do this work with, over and over again, without fail? Because we really, we really don't have that. We have more, it's more or less, and I learned this from our precinct, because we started from scratch. We had six people who had never done this before, including me. And we were lucky enough to get someone from the previous group to come and spend the first election with us. But a lot of what we have to learn to do could be memorialized by an instructional designer. So, and that would mean something that we could go online and learn. So it'd be e-learning, online learning, and it'll be available to all the people who do all the work within the polls. Because we, sitting back there, I heard a lot of things that sounded like people weren't really sure about how something was going to happen. And just to put a plug in, you know, not that I know the people there anymore, but Bloomberg University has a master's degree program in instructional design. And I really think it can make a difference to ramp up the effect of the training. Just to finish it off for the moment, I'll take questions, of course. The three things that the voters that I talked to, and I talked to most of them on the way in, and then I asked them on the way out, if the experience was as easy as they thought it was going to be. And they all said yes, because they had an idea about what they were going to do. But they changed the paper ballot, of course. They didn't like that. They didn't understand why the retention ballot for judges did not have the party that the judge was from next to their name. And I could not answer that, and I'm not sure I still could at this point. So they were actually just, you know, voting for someone, trying, having to remember the name of the people. They have to do the research ahead of time if they were just going to vote for a Republican or a Democrat. And the other question immediately was, will these ballots still have straight ticket options on them? And I said, yes, they do for now. So a lot of, almost every voter was interested in that also. So, okay, well, that's about all I have to say for the moment.
Just thinking after... I'm just thinking, after you and your colleagues making that same statement 350 or 360 times, you probably were thinking it in your sleep for several nights afterwards. Senator, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Heinley, thank you so much. You are to be commended for stepping up and really being the backbone of our voting process. We couldn't run elections without volunteers like yourself, so thank you. Could you talk a little bit more about what happened in York Township 5-1 during that 2019 election? What you did, did it help the voters to get past the problems that so many other voters experienced? And I'm really interested in your expanding on your thoughts about what the county or the Department of State might have done differently to avoid the problems in the first place, and what they might have done to be able to ensure probably a lot less inconvenience for the voters in York County. Taking those lessons and then applying them because, as noted, we have several counties, I believe they said it was 22, that have yet to implement the new voting system.
Well, my, my team made it a point to be sure that they knew how that machine operated, two of them especially. They went to a couple extra trainings. All of us went to a training, and it wasn't, it's not easy. Even if you watch a video, it's not easy. You have to be there. You have to actually push the buttons and put the paper in and that sort of thing. And so, we made it a point that we were really trained up on that. So, we knew how this machine operated. And so, when we opened the poll that morning, we were not allowed to look at the, open the ballots. They were, they were actually in the machine, so we weren't allowed to see them, except for a sample about, at that judge's training, we saw a sample of it. So, when we opened it up, the ballots were stapled, so my team immediately started taking the staples out and trying to, and we tried to vote, and we tried to put, we put those in the machine and rejected them. And then, so I right away called the election office, and they, they knew what I was calling about, and they said, "Well, they need, they're perforated." So, very hard to see the perforation. So, then we went into team mode and started pulling off all the stubs that we could as fast as we could, and did that throughout the whole day so that they would go into the machine and not jam it up. And some of them, we ripped, that was some of the ones I mentioned earlier. Some of them, we ripped in the process of doing it because it was so difficult. So, that was, that was really a big thing. And then, and then, as I've already said, you know, greeting the poll, the voters, and making sure that they were getting through our system, our part of the assembly line, without fail. As far as with the county, I guess your question is, what could they have done differently?
Yes.
I think that, like I said, I think communicating in real time instead of waiting until the election and, you know, thinking through things like, "How many privacy screens are you going to need?" Because I didn't know about that until we went, I went to judge's training, and they said, "Well, there's going to be one more screen than a number of old machines that you had." And I'm not a math major, but right away, I knew that was going to be a problem, only having five places to sit. And, and so, we got some more. So, we had, we had nine, and we didn't have any lines. All day long, we didn't have any lines because of that. But people were sitting at tables, and someone mentioned earlier that every poll is different, and they are. So, a little more emphasis on thinking about the layouts of your, of your polls. And all that was different for us in this election because, and people may not have been thinking about that ahead of time. And, and training, I already mentioned the training and what I thought we should be thinking about there. But they try, they, the county office, I think they do a really nice job. I think a lot of what they do is still paper-based and not, in a system somehow. I'm not sure why, but I think that's...
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Chairman.
Let me ask you the same question I've asked every witness before. Your prediction as to the conduct of the primary and the general election this year across Pennsylvania, can we be assured of no major issues?
Well, I can't say yes to that because I'm not sure what's been going on and what kind of a metric we're using in my, in any of those places that you mentioned, including York County. I have no idea what metric they're using. I have no idea if we're going to have more than one machine or not. I have no idea if we're going to have more privacy screens or not. I don't, I still don't know that.
Too soon to say.
Pardon?
Too soon to say.
I guess it's too soon for them to tell us, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
But, but as I said earlier, if you use, if you use our poll as a metric for this, we had 772 ballots go through, so, and we didn't have any, any real problems. Assuming that the next elections are going to be bigger, you know, how are we going to determine how many we need? There's, and I think that the, I was just, I would think that the manufacturers of this, this equipment would have all sorts of ways of predicting that, that we could verify.
Okay.
But if we don't do that, it's going to be, there'll be lines everywhere.
Yeah, we've seen those in the past. Well, thank you, and I appreciated your suggestions regarding Bloomsburg's education program. My mother is a proud 1957 graduate. We just donated the complete records of the class of 1957 to the university archives, and so, she has many times spoken of her, her time there. Again, if there's no other questions, thank you very much. We stand adjourned.